Evening and welcome to the October fourteenth meeting of the BRIA Board of Education. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Mack?
Here.
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mrs. Michael?
Here.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) Okay, first we have public participation. And Matt Petrus is first. I see we have a few people who are new speakers tonight, not Matt, though. So just wanted to let you know that there'll be a timer for three minutes on the screen, and you'll hear it beep when three minutes is up.
Good evening. Matt Petrus from the middle school. I just have some shout-outs to do from the middle school. I'd like to shout out the following staff members who attended Camp Mibrovi and spent four days and three nights with our sixth graders. Tracy Slovic, Lori Bazinski, Elliot Goudy, Lori Pearl, Angie Barnhauser, Mark Simon, David Kuschlak, Chuck Spittle, Mike Pearl, Kathy Ross, Sharon Hamilton, myself, Michelle Boatsman, May Williams, Tracy Slovic, Becky Walzer, Rachel Main, Gretchen Strauss, Michelle Gardner, Mike Lawfick, Hannah Allen, Jordan Rosick, and Tracy Brandt. It took, you know, we had three weeks out there, and all those staff members there giving up their time at night and with the family to give those sixth graders an experience that they truly have a great time with, you know. When the kids are packing up and heading out, we're just kind of asking them, "Do you have a good time?" "Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah." And one kid, "Time of my life. This was the best four days of my life." So it's great that BRIA, you know, has done this for many, many years and continues to promote it and allows this opportunity for our sixth graders. And my kids have gone through it, and when I was going out there, they still, you know, talk about the times when they went out there and everything like that. So it's wonderful that BRIA supports this opportunity for our sixth graders, that a lot of them have never gone camping before, been away from home, you know, for four, four days and three nights, so. And the parents like it, too, I think, too. Shout-out to Officer Fred. You know, Officer Fred volunteered all three weeks to go out to Camp Mibrovi. He's been attending Camp Mibrovi for like thirty-nine years. He truly motivates and brings energy to our nightly campfires, if you're out there. He fires them up at eleven-thirty at night, so. Shout-out to Amanda Prock. She organized a unique one-day trip to camp for our students in our resource room, who otherwise might not have been able to enjoy the camp experience. And a big shout-out to David Kuschlak. He is our camp director, and he spent three full weeks out there doing all the prep ahead of time, meeting with the high school counselors, getting them prepared, ordering everything with the food that goes along with that, and then being out there for three straight weeks, so. Shout-out to Mike Pearl and his garden club, who were recognized with another News Depth A+ Award for their continued efforts to maintain, update, and expand their courtyard and surrounding gardens. And it's nice that this is their second time being recognized on the National News Depth and having an article or a video portraying their garden club and how important it's been and what they've done. Shout-out to Jackie Schwartz and Nick Hall for organizing and hosting the first Fox Eight School Weather Live broadcast from BMMS. Shout-out to the students and family support specialists, Chris Henderson and Cheryl Delilah, along with school counselor Lori Getz, for their incredible work with the first annual BCSD Wellfest. Shout-out to Madison Carlton and Joy Meany, who developed a session and presented during our staff PD Day on UDL Guidelines and Student Choices last Thursday. And then just a shout-out to the entire middle school staff. We've had a great start to the year. Our team leaders had a retreat during the summer, and they've brought back a lot of those things into place with the teams so that we can adjust our schedules and do different activities with the kids to make it a really strong start to the school year. I think our first quarter went very strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David McCammon. Did I say that correctly?
So I just wanted to talk about the new grading systems and how it's affecting my daughters. I have two daughters, they are both sophomores. This new grading system is creating a lot of stress on them and anxiety. My one daughter has anxiety issues to begin with and testing anxiety, and this has ramped it up horribly, to the point where she's actually had to have more therapy now because of the system. She had an F in one class. She turned in a paper, it went from an F to a C, and then the teacher told her if she retook the test and did well on it, she could go to an A. I don't see how that's even fair with all the homework and stuff that they're doing. They're doing homework till one in the morning. A lot of times, it's, it's almost pointless for me to tell them to do it if it's only counting for ten percent of their grade. I've had, heard a lot of parents talking about this. My one daughter's actually asked me to put her into a private school, which we've thought about. We don't want to do that, but, I mean, that may be an option. I've heard other parents talking about it, too. But the biggest problem I see with this new system is it doesn't seem to be rolled out to your teachers in the correct way. All the teachers seem to kind of be doing their own thing. Some of them are only allowing them to take one retest, others are allowing them to take multiple retests. Some of them say if you're over a certain percentage, you don't get any retests at all. And this system was kind of ruled out as being more fair and equitable, and it's obviously not if not all the teachers are on the same page. I don't think it's a bad system, but I think it does need some work and some issues. So I would just like you guys to consider that. And that's pretty much it, so, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Next, we have Tamika Relaford.
Hi, I want to thank you guys for your time. I'm here for the same reason with, for my students that I have in school with a grading system. Like, I do agree with testing being important and focusing on testing, but I do question, who is teaching the children how to study? You know, how to organize your time, how to be able to organize your time for lunch in, lunch out? So, for example, my child, because they did not do well in their first three exams, they had to go in, like, the next week for all three, three subjects. So, so now that all three subjects she did not do good in, so now she has to learn those three subjects over, and on top of it, the next week after that, she has to take another test, right, for the same three subjects. So she spent so much time focusing on the one subject that she didn't even realize, "Oh, I have two other subjects that I need to focus on." So not only they're not teaching them how to study for these tests, but, and then the test questions, the EOCs, the EOS, I'm sorry, I don't know the names. So not only are they focusing on those questions, she needs to organize her lunch in, lunch outs. I don't even know if she's eating. The teacher's obviously, like he was saying, that they're not organized with their time for the lunch in, lunch out. So some teachers have, where Monday, Tuesday, they have students come in, and the rest, the teachers are Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, other students are taking tests. So now they're taking tests, so when is she going to have time to study when she's doing her lunch in, lunch out? You know, with all these test-taking, test-taking, test-takings, and on top of it, doing the studying? So, like, there's just so much going on. Like, I've had to talk to the counselors, I've had to reach out to the principal, I've had to talk to my daughter, because she doesn't even want to go to class anymore because of the fact that it's just so overwhelming at this point. So she was an eager student and ready to go to school, like, both of my children, and now it's just like, you know, all I have to focus is on these questions and how to take these questions. So it's like, I like the fact that they get to learn how to take tests, because tests are important, and that's how you demonstrate that you've learned the information, but yet we're not teaching them how to learn that information timely, or teaching them how to learn those question styles. Because I want my children to have these opportunities and these open doors for these tests, because that's really what's going to help them get into colleges and be successful, but I just don't see this being rolled out well for my children. And like, right now, I can't stay, because I have this child who's in sixth grade, she has three tests right now, she has IEP, she's struggling. I mean, I just, it's overwhelming at this moment, like, they're in tears all the time. So if we can just be mindful and maybe take it back, or just, like, reroll it out in a different way, I think that would be, like, be better and more mindful to the students and the workloads that they have. All right? I thank you guys for listening.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
And our final speaker is April Rivera.
Hello. Sorry, I'm a little short. So I'm also here to talk about the grading practices. I'm, I'm coming to as a parent. I do teach kindergarten in the district. I have three kids in the district, a fifth grader, an eighth grader, a tenth grader. And my husband is also a teacher in the district. So I'm kind of living it out of lots of different worlds here. One thing I think that we need to think about is that the teachers, I believe it was rolled out to the teachers, and I will say I own it, that being a kindergarten teacher, when it was rolled out, I didn't necessarily digest it as well, because I felt like, "I'm teaching kindergarten, I'm not going to have to really deal with this." But from the parent's side of it, I feel like that the teachers are a little bit inconsistent with the mastery versus work habits. I feel like with the UDL that we do, and for those of you that don't know, it's Universal Design Learning, we have a lot of different ways to show mastery, but I feel like this ninety percent is really just, for a lot of teachers, just tests and quizzes. There's no other, they don't feel like anything else is mastery. And I know that there's other ways to show mastery. My daughter is an AP push, and she will come home and work for hours and hours upon for these focus questions, and she's having to go back and find evidence, and she's trying to prove herself in all these things with these focus questions, but it's going into the ten percent. And sometimes she's just feeling like, really stressed out about it, because she's spending all this time improving the mastery and everything, and it's going into the ten percent. There has been so much stress and anxiety with my two older ones specifically, just trying to retake the test to, you know, to gain the mastery and try and learn the new curriculum that they're being pushed to learn. And I know sophomore year is a really rough year. I know, she, you know, my sophomore is in AP classes, she's in all honors classes, she has a huge workload, and I, she totally understands it, but the stress that this ninety percent has caused her has been, it's just been really rough on her. There's days she doesn't, same thing, doesn't want to come to school, just, you know, she just is so overwhelmed by everything. A lot of things, too, I think the retakes, originally it was rolled out saying that retakes were the safety net, but if they're only allowed one retake, that's not really a safety net for that ninety percent. That's what my daughter's been told, that they, she can only retake a test one time. Another thing I've heard, like I said, I have three kids, they're very involved in being a teacher, I've heard from multiple parents, you know, parents come to me and tell me their thoughts and things. I've heard a lot of parents at the high school are considering just taking CCP classes, because then their child will still have that rigor, but they won't be held to the ninety-ten percent. So I think that's something that we need to really consider, because if you have all of these students that are taking EP classes no longer wanting to take AP because of that ninety-ten and want to just take CCP, I think that could be a real, a real impact. We might not see it right away, but I feel like in a couple of years, that could be a huge thing. That's been something that's brought to my attention by a lot of people. And again, we have some teachers that, when they're taking a retake, they have to retake the whole test, and some that are just having them take the areas that they didn't master, which in my opinion is really the area, you don't need to retake a whole test if you've already mastered, you know, seventy-five percent of the test, you could really just look at those twenty-five percent that you haven't retaken. I appreciate the work that the teachers are putting into it. I know, you know, having a, my husband teaches fifth grade, he has put a lot of time and effort into what they're doing to show mastery, you know, what they're doing to be able to retake the test and being able to have the time and everything put into it, but I just feel like maybe a slower rollout, or maybe even starting with like a seventy-thirty would have been beneficial than to kind of, and let us live it a little bit, and then kind of, you know, go from there. But I just feel like the stress and anxiety that it's put on these kids has just been huge. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just for people who, it's their first time speaking, the board meeting, the board doesn't respond to the information that's given to us, that's just not the forum for here, but someone from the board office or Dr. Smithberger, I'm not sure, whoever, Mr. Draves and Mrs. Wheeler decide.
Yeah, Mrs. Wheeler.
We'll get back to them.
Yeah, we will have, Mr. De Senza will get ahold of everyone who spoke this evening to get more details and specifics, and we appreciate, thank you for your comments tonight. We actually, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next we have student recognition. We have two outstanding students today. Our first is Christina Calvis. Christine, if you could come up here to the microphone. Christina is being recognized because she is a National Merit Scholar semifinalist. So, just reading from the website here, over 1.3 million juniors, so this was last year for you, you're a senior?
Yes.
In about 21,000 high schools, entered the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the PSAT qualifying test, which served as an initial scream, initial screen of program entrance. The nationwide pool of semifinalists representing less than one percent of US high school seniors includes the highest-scoring entrance in each state. So certainly a big accomplishment. So where, what happens from here?
So I was named a semifinalist, so I filled out an application recently to become a finalist, and I think around in February, the finalists will be announced, and hopefully from there, I'll be an official National Merit Scholar.
And you're a senior?
Yes.
So what are, what are your plans for next year?
I'm hoping to go to college, I'm not sure where, but I'm planning on either studying education or nursing.
Public service. We like that. Yeah. You're one of five girls, right?
Yes, yeah.
The youngest?
Mm-hmm.
This is the last year we have a Calvis? Wow. Wow. Very high-achieving family. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us about what this honor means to you, or, you know, the school in general?
I think just thank you for all the support that I've gotten so far, and all the great teachers that I've had have really helped me along the way to encourage me to achieve the best that I can, and so I'm just very thankful for all the help that I've been given.
Thank you, and we appreciate you and are very proud of you.
Thank you.
Good luck. And next, we have Matt Verzic. Matt is being recognized tonight because he has earned the rank of Eagle Scout. So, in my research, Matt, you tell me if this is wrong, please, the percentage of Scouts who actually become Eagles is only about four percent.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, and then the percentage of eligible youth in the whole United States, probably the population of youth in the United States who are eligible to participate in Scouts, the percentage drops to about zero-point-three percent.
I, like, that sounds right.
It's okay, you don't have to be humble. It's a, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. So what, tell us about your Eagle project.
So I met with faculty here at the high school, including Dr. Smithberger and a couple of my other teachers, Mrs. Draves as well, and came up with the idea to add a bench into the memorial garden here at the high school, and it serves as, like, more use for the area for lunch and learn, as students can be out in the area more, and just so people can use the garden more, and it's useful.
And tell us about all those badges you're wearing.
So these are my, my merit badges. I had to do, like, it's like homework for Boy Scouts, pretty much, and the silver ones are the ones that I were required to get for Eagle, and the green ones were just for fun. I like, some of these I have climbing, plumbing, and some of the others is cooking and camping, so from essential to just for fun.
Which is your favorite?
I like the canoeing, canoeing one.
The canoeing one?
Yeah, it's fun.
And you're a senior also?
Yes.
And what are your plans for next year?
Attend college for, and study management of information systems.
And you two come from a successful family. Isn't your older brother an Eagle Scout also?
Yep.
I remember honoring him several years ago. I believe it was actually the meeting right before COVID in 2020, we were at the middle school. Yeah. So obviously, a lot of support at home. Well, we're very proud of you, Matt.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming out, and good luck to you as well.
Thank you for having me.
And we have a lot to do in our meeting, so please don't feel bad if you need to leave. We know the Guardians game started eleven minutes ago, so. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our Polaris report from Doug Schwend.
So I'd like to start off with, as the BRIA schools had gotten their school report card, Polaris gets a school report card as well, and they scored a five-star overall, and, which is significantly exceeds state standards, and on the achievement section, they scored four stars, graduation rate, five, career and post-secondary readiness, five, and post-program outcomes, they scored five as well. Update on the ERA project, they removed some of the metal panels on the back of the building, and they've started doing some excavating, so that's exciting that the project is starting to get underway. You left your, somebody left their phone up here. I just saw that. No problem.
No problem.
So Polaris started a new program, and it's, they're using this as a credential for the Exercise Science Program, and it's, it's called REF, REF Reps. It's a officiating education program. So there's twenty-five students that have signed up to take the officiating class, and the students will complete five to ten hours of online course, and then they'll have some in-person training with local officials at Polaris, and the first offering is going to be for basketball officiating. It's a pretty cool program they have there. And Polaris has partnered with Fairview, Fairview Schools, and Shook Construction, and the Building Trades Program, and as part of their program, they build like a, kind of like a playhouse almost, and it, and it teaches them all the different parts of framing, roofing, I think they even do plumbing in them, and some electrical stuff. So they partnered with Fairview Schools and Fairview Community, and the houses will be built, and then they're going to be used for a safety town in Fairview. And last year, the same, similar program was with Shook Construction and the Brooklyn Schools, and they did that. As, I think the board's aware, Superintendent Bob Timmons from Polaris is going to retire on the thirty-first of December, and the board had decided to do an internal search for his replacement. And the application period took place in the middle of September. We did interviews with three candidates on September thirtieth, and on October sixteenth, we're going to do a second round of interviews, and there's no timeline to announce the successful applicant is right now. And if you guys have any questions relating to that, please feel free to contact me, and I can explain, this is really where it is for right now. Any questions?
I have a quick question about the REF Reps.
Yes.
Is that only for students, or is that also adult education?
I think it's only for students right now. I don't think it's adult education. I do know that there's been a serious decline in people wanting to officiate because of parents, and, and I'm lashing out at them. I know the city of Brook Park even strengthened their ordinance for the penalties for things at sporting events like that. So I think maybe this is something to try and get some, some of these younger kids involved, and, and hopefully they'll be able to be the next generation of officials. I can check on that and get back to you if, if you'd like, but I'm pretty sure the Exercise Science Program is not a night program, it's only a day program.
Okay. Thank you.
Alrighty.
And we'll see you next day. Next Tuesday is the, there's a dinner at Polaris for all the associate boards, so if any of us are able to attend that night, and it'll just be a ni, a nice evening, prepared and served by students at Polaris. Okay, Mr. De Senza is going to give us a presentation on the state report card.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm excited to share what came out a little over a month ago with our state report card. Some really great things to celebrate, but first and foremost, and I've, I've mentioned this at my previous state report card presentations, the state report card measures, it's, it's one measure of what schools do, how school districts perform, and we have a variety of different ways to internally measure our success in the district. And so I just wanted to point out a few of them, you know, going to a school building, attending their events, is one of the greatest ways to see what our school district's all about. Our Portrait of a Titan is our, our North Star, and those competencies, competencies that we're trying to develop in all of our students are far more than a test score and a priority for us as well. So that's my disclaimer, but the rest of the presentation really is going to be about the data from the state report card, because there is a lot of exciting things that I wanted to share with you. And there is our Portrait of a Titan, so that is our priority, of course. Those are the six competencies you want all of our students to have. And there is our portrait of a titan. So that is our priority, of course. Those are the six competencies you want all of our students to have by the time they graduate our district. Turn this way so I could see it. So the, is that the next slide? Okay, maybe that one got out of order somehow. So the use of the state report card, so it obviously provides us with some valuable information, and we use the data to make decisions for school improvement. Okay, I don't know why that one's inserted in there. So the, so I'm going to talk a lot about stars. I'm going to talk a lot about percentages. I'm going to talk about charts. And all of those things are really important to show our growth, but really what we talk about is behind all those stars and the charts going up and the percentages increasing, our individual students who are now more prepared for the future. They're earning graduation diplomas. They are on track with their peers, with literacy, which we know is a key component to success in the future. And all of our kids represent students in a subgroup who are closing gaps within that subgroup. So, you know, I'm going to talk a lot about stars and percentages and growth, but behind all of those numbers and figures are individual students. That's really what drives us every day. All right, so here's the categories. I'll go through each of them, so I won't talk in depth of them right now, but those are the different pieces of the state report card. And here is, I'd like to do a little comparison of previous year to this year here. So our overall rating remained a four, achievement remained a three, progress remained four stars. Gap closing went from five stars to four stars. Graduation rate rating increased from three to four, and our early literacy from three to four as well. So some nice growth throughout. Here's how we fell according to, or in comparison to the rest of school districts in the state. The red circle indicates how many stars we had in that component. Our overall rating is shown there at the bottom. All right, you can go to the next one, Vicki. Thank you. So just also a disclaimer to, or a description. I want to, I like to spend time describing what each of these stars means. And so, you know, everybody talks about, you know, five stars is obviously the goal. The state does, you know, three stars, the state says meets the standards for the state in academic achievement. So three stars is, you know, you meet that expectation. Four exceeds the expectation, and five is significantly exceeds that expectation. And so the state report card, this is what is comprised within the state report card. There are six categories and six components, and within those components, some have multiple measures, okay? That top right corner, college, career, and workforce and military readiness component is in the report card, yet it is not measured yet. So they've been showing it to us the past two years as a precursor to eventually making it a part of the report card, but it is not yet a part of the report card. So our overall rating, again, maintained four stars. So just a little description, the overall rating is all of the components together. There's points that are assigned based on how well we did in that component. There's an assigned weight to each. Each of those categories or components don't hold the same weight. So you could see that, the weighting there. And then it accumulates to a weighted points, which total at the very bottom to 3.5, which is pretty exciting because it's an increase. Actually, it's a, it's a more of a four star than it was last year, right? A better four star than it was last year. And you could see the scale over there on the right-hand side, where we're creeping up to that, you know, four and a half star. At 3.625, we would reach four and a half star. So our trajectory hopefully will continue, and we'll have another half star next year. Achievement, so achievement is, really, they use the performance index. I'll talk just briefly about that in a minute. But the measure of achievement is the performance index, and our performance index went slightly up. The state saw a trend down in performance index, so I'm happy to see that ours maintained and even went up a little bit. They use a calculation to determine the maximum possible performance index points. That went up by a percent, almost a percent, half percent or so, from last year. And then your performance index points are measured to that maximum possible score, giving you a percentage of that maximum possible score. So our performance index percentage was 78.3, which is slightly lower than last year because of the increase in the ceiling of the performance index. But again, three stars. So performance index takes each individual kid, this is just a real brief explanation, and assigns each kid, each test, a weight. So if a student scores advanced plus, they count as 1.3 points. If they are untested, they're zero. All those kids get added up, and a mathematical formula is applied to it to give us our performance index. So you're getting more points, not just for kids scoring proficient or where they should be, but also getting extra points if they score beyond proficient and lose points if they score low, levels below proficient. And this is our performance index percent over time. It's pretty exciting to see. You know, you go back to, we obviously have the dip there from COVID, but we are surpassing our pre-COVID performance index points. So we're really happy with that trajectory. This is, so this is all of the first-string districts based on their performance index. This is something we like to measure ourselves according to the state, according to similar districts, and according to first-string districts. It gives us a gauge as to how we're doing.
Can I interrupt us for a second?
Please.
For people out there that might not know what first-string districts are, can you explain that?
Yeah, so these are all the school districts that have a physical border with the city of Cleveland. And so they have a very similar demographic, some more similar than others, but they all have some factors or attributes that are very similar because they are bordering an urban area. And so we fared very well within our performance index measure across the first-string districts. And this is, like I said, we also measure ourselves against the state. So this graph shows what we do is we take all of our tests, all of our tested areas, and we give ourselves a plus or minus according to the state. So were we above the state, below the state, and how much? And when we add all those together, it gives us one big picture as to how we performed against the state. And you'll see this is our highest achievement above the state that we've seen, and that trend is continuing up. We had that dip from COVID, but have made some really great gains and growth since then. Progress is also, you may have heard value-added, but it's a measure of student growth based on a projection of where students, they expect to be in the next year and how they actually perform. Our rating was maintained at four stars. And here is a measure of our progress ratings over, the star rating over the years. So you could see the X's are times when we did not have progress for two years because of COVID. But we continue that trajectory and showing that we are making gains with students each year, and they're exceeding where they're expected to grow from year to year. This is a chart that shows all of our tested areas and how they fared with progress measure. So you'll see across the top, it's all grades, so language arts, math, science, and then overall, all tested. Dark blue is significant evidence that they exceeded student growth expectations. Light blue is significant evidence that they exceeded growth expectation. The dark blue is by a large magnitude. Green is that they met student growth expectations, and yellow and red is that they did not. And so you could see all of our tested areas and how they performed. I love the one at the top. I mean, all grades, language arts, we're meeting the expectation, and math, we're above, and science, we're meeting. And overall, we are exceeding the expected growth of our students. And then this really gives us a nice picture of where we need to target as well. You'll see how well the high school fared. All of their tested areas were above what would have been expected of students as far as growth is concerned. We had some really great gains in eighth grade math and language arts. And we see fifth grade, a really big transition year for our kids, is a time where we see a dip. So that gives us some information on how to proceed. And so we're going to spend some time with that curriculum to make sure we're spot on with our alignment and able to address that. So we had 18 tests that have a progress measure. Eight tests had exceeded expected growth, five that they made expected growth. So 13 out of the 18 were, 18 were either at or above what was expected. And the highest possible growth rating that I showed you, the dark blue, we had six areas there that met that, which is pretty great. And we definitely want to celebrate those groups. Gap closing is always an important one for our district. This is the measure of how our subgroups closed a gap or met a goal that the state sets for each subgroup based on their previous performance, and whether they meet that goal. We maintained, or I'm sorry, we dropped from five stars to four stars. Our points possible went up a little bit this past year, but our points earned was 36. Our final percentage was 52.2, a little bit down from our 61.8. I'll talk a little bit about where that drop came from as well. So it shows how well, again, like I said, our schools are meeting their performance expectations of, in its language arts, math, gifted, graduation for all of our subgroups. These are our subgroups that we represent, that we have represented in our school districts. Not all school districts are as diverse as ours and have the number of students that qualify them to have a subgroup. We have a wide variety of subgroups, which is great. And it's based on an annual goal that is set for all of those subgroups in these areas. So it's ELA achievement, ELA growth, math achievement, math growth, graduation, English learner proficiency, chronic absenteeism, and gifted performance. One of the biggest things that we faced this past year that we're looking to address this year is our chronic absenteeism. That is actually the main factor for our drop from five stars to four stars. Chronic absenteeism is any student who misses 10% of the school year or more for any reason, excused, unexcused, vacation, doesn't matter. And so we did not meet our goal for chronic absenteeism. So we had more kids that were chronically absent last year than the year before. So a lot of our buildings, it's always a focus for our district, our Stay in the Game initiative and our PBIS initiative. So I know that's going to be, that's a heightened thing for this year as well that we're going to address. But also each of our buildings, many of our buildings where this was an issue, have targeted absenteeism as one of their building goals to address this year as well.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
As far as absenteeism goes, I know that this is trailing data, so this is for the previous school year. And knowing that we have been partnering with the Browns and trying to get kids excited about going to school, I know that that is something that we'll see this year's, or I should say,
Hope so.
The report that comes out next year for the current year. But is there, are, is the programs working? And just on a broad, you know, kind of overlooking the whole prop, the whole issue, is the tools that we're using to get kids excited, is, see a difference?
Those are the questions we're going to have to ask. Last year, obviously, we had a dip in absenteeism. There's a lot of different reasons why that could be, you know? It doesn't take much, especially, you know, our high school kids are so involved and miss for so many different reasons, right? And most of them are okay. It's not bad.
I guess that is something that you got to think about, is that a lot of times, you know, when you think chronic absenteeism, you think that it's a deliberate. Sometimes it's not always a deliberate.
Yeah, the studies show.
Or a wrongful act. There are situations.
I mean, there's obviously an impact for students who miss 10% or more of the school year. We know that. That's what research tells us, and that's why that chronic absenteeism is set at that point. But yeah, there are a lot of factors that go into that. So then that's part of our RTI process at the district, too. We're meeting on Friday with the high school team, one of our trigger points this year, and that's going to be our first time rolling out RTI process or MTSS process at the high school to respond to.
Acronyms?
Response to intervention. So we have a series of criteria that we're looking and applying to all of our students and identifying which students trigger for what reason. And one of those is absenteeism retardiness at the high school. And so we're going to be able to more specifically identify students who are at risk after this first quarter and develop interventions, have communication. Sometimes it's just awareness, you know? You know, there's, we have, you know, sometimes kids, families will give kids days off because of, you know, mental health or because they think they need a break, and, you know, just having those conversations with parents where showing up sometimes makes a difference for kids and to try to avoid those situations as much as possible. So, yeah. And then this is our gap closing stars. So you could see we've gone from, we made some big jumps, and we've maintained them for years.
Is the state still calculating by days for those, for the chronic absenteeism, or by hours?
Hours. Yeah.
And they don't specify the reason for, you know, like kids who have to, they leave for like, let's say that the athletes go and they read to the second graders in another building, and they're still in school.
Right.
But that counts as an absence?
If it is categorized like that in our student management system as an excused absence, I'm not 100% sure that those are categorized that way, but yeah.
Could you please repeat?
Yeah, so Dr. Smithberger mentioned that that would be considered a field trip. Field trips don't count against your hours.
But dentist appointments?
Dentist appointments, college visits, you know, those types of things would. So eight out of our nine subgroups exceeded their, or met, or exceeded their target. Eight of them in math and then also in language arts. All of our subgroups exceeded their graduation rate target, and I mentioned the chronic absenteeism. Graduation, this is a really exciting one. Made some huge strides. Just a reminder, though, this is actually, you talk about old data, right? This one is our class of 2023. So it's not the class that we just celebrated this past spring. It's the class before that. But that group, their four-year graduation was 96.1%, the five-year graduation rate, that cohort that was able to graduate in five years was 93.7%. They take those two numbers and calculate a weighted graduation rate, which is 95.1. And you could see the comparison to 20, our class of 2022, some big strides. And here's a chart of our graduation rate, our four-year graduation rate over the past 12 years. And you could see this is the highest graduation rate we have had in history, really, even going back further that I have been able to find. This is the highest graduation rate that we've had. So, which is exciting. And this is a stat that tells, you know, that looks nice, but again, there's kids behind that 4% jump that, there are actual kids with high school diplomas now that didn't have them in previous years. And we know what that does for a student's opportunities in the future. So our graduation rate is 8.2% above the state average. Our four-year graduation rate, our four-year graduation rate is 3.1% above our similar districts. So a measure of how the state defines our most similar districts. Our five-year graduation rate is also much far above the state average, and our graduation rate is the highest in our district's history. And so huge shout out to the high school and Dr. Smithberger, all the teachers and staff who have put a lot of things in place for kids who may not have reached that milestone without. without the structures and supports that they've put in place. Early literacy. So I'm biased, this is my favorite one. So I am most excited about this one. And this is coming from a middle school teacher who taught social studies. But so really, the early literacy measure has three main pieces to it. It is the proficiency of students in third grade reading. So how many, what percentage of students pass the third grade reading test, which the state has identified as that critical hinge point for students for lifetime literacy, promotion to fourth grade, so those students who met the requirements to move from third grade to fourth grade, and improving K3 literacy. This one is a, I think, a really cool one. This is how well, it measures how well we do in getting our kids who initially were assessed in a diagnostic assessment in the fall as being off track. That following fall, how, what percentage of them are moved to on track. So that really shows the impact of our instruction and our intervention on students who are off track and whether we're able to get them to an on-track status with their peers. So these are, this tells you nothing other than the list of 19 schools that are determined to be most like us in the state. These are our most similar districts. I use that for the next slide to go over a little bit of information about the early literacy component. So in, overall, in early literacy in 2022, our percentage in this component was 69.6. In 2023, it was 71.2. You could see where we fell within the other 19 similar districts, right around the middle of the pack, 11 out of 21 and 10 out of 21. And then this year, we made a huge jump. And we are at 16 out of 21 and within a percentage or so of those, of the, the top districts who are receiving an early literacy rating. And these are all districts that the state says are, across the state, that are most similar to us.
Is that similar in size, socioeconomic, or what?
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. It's interesting. Some are very similar in size, some are very similar in demographic. Some are like us, more urban, some are rural, but their poverty matches ours. So it's a wide variety, actually, looking at the cities. Sometimes you think about like, how is that a similar district? And then you have to kind of dig into the data to see, you know, the different components that make them similar to us. So early literacy, improving K3 literacy. So just some stats here, that 59.2% of our off-track students in K3 moved to on-track in, in the 2024 school year. 59.2% is that off-track to on-track move is the 52nd highest percentage of any district statewide out of 607 schools. So we're right there at the very top in the state and in impacting and moving our students from off-track to on-track. And the actual students, it's 244 students that we were able to move from off-track to on-track by the time they were in third grade, which means we know a lot to those 244 kids and their, what their road looks like for the rest of their lives because they're on track in literacy. And this is our similar districts for improving K3 literacy, which I was just talking about, that moving them from off-track to on-track. The past two years, the previous two years, you could see we were right around the middle of the pack as far as those other districts that are determined to be most similar to us. And then this past year, we were right there at the top. That 59.2 as applied to similar districts is, you know, less, about a 1% from the very top. So that's super exciting to us. This is something we're really, really proud of, and we know is going to make a huge impact years and years down the road. And first ring districts, this is a comparison to our, our improving K3 literacy applied to the different first ring districts. And you could see that we had the highest improving K3 literacy of any first ring district in the area. And love a line graph to show our progress as well, so you could see our trajectory. All right, so the last item, I mentioned it at the very beginning. The college career workforce and military readiness, I always have to look at it to read it correctly. But this is something that we've been hearing about and we've been seeing the results of over the past couple of years. We know it's coming. They say it's going to be a part of our state report card. They're not saying it's going to be next year yet. But our percentage this year was 62.8%. That means that 62.8% of our graduating students have attained at least one of these measures that says that they are college career workforce or military ready, right? And so these are the different ways that a student can be determined to be that. So it's just some highlights of it is, so overall percent, we've increased every year in the past three years. So in 2022, we had 34.1% of our high school students attaining one of those measures. Last year it was 41.3, or two years ago it was 41.3, last year it was 62.8. Two measures I think we're most proud of is that I think show that some good things are happening is our ACT SAT remediation free. So what percentage of our students took the ACT or SAT and scored at a remediation free level, which is described over on the far right? And we've gone from 20% of students remediation free to 27, over 27%. And I know this is a concerted effort of the high school and Dr. Smithberger, the AP tests. So how many students, three or more AP tests are taken? And we have a lot more kids that are pushing themselves into that AP environment and that that shows there with that percentage as well. So this is our district, our different buildings and their stars that they achieve. All of our district buildings did really well. We're really proud of them. All had, you know, really wonderful shining points that we can, that we could celebrate. And then I go through each of those buildings, slide by slide, which I won't take any more time with. But are they on there? Yeah. The high school, four and a half stars. The middle school, three stars. Big Creek, five stars. Brook Park, three stars as well. Grindstone, five stars. And the most important piece to this is now responding to it and doing something about it and making sure that we're understanding the information and making decisions with that information. And so we're going to continue to, we use our teacher-based teams as that vehicle to address any curriculum issues. When we see things don't look right, then we spend time with those teachers in that teacher-based team to try to diagnose what that issue might be. It's interesting how many times we find out it's just an alignment or a pacing of curriculum thing that were, that if we addressed, we could see some really great improvements. We saw that this past year with TBTs we worked with the previous year. They came back this year and made huge gains, just making, just keeping an eye on the pacing and the curriculum and making sure it matches what the state, the rigor, and what they're asking for. And continuing with our professional development around our instructional practices, making sure that they are the most effective with students. And we, with our, our TBTs that are showing some real signs of something might be going on, we pull the entire, we pull the TBT in together to give them a day and we work with them to facilitate some planning to address some of those things. And we found a lot of success with that. And I just went through, I won't read them all, but ways that we address progress and gap closing. Again, mentioning the chronic absenteeism. This has become a building goal in most of our buildings that have that as an issue in their building. And so we'll be targeting that in those buildings. And graduation rates, we're going to continue to do the things that we've been doing to get to the graduation rate that we have right now. And early literacy, you know, we're doing a lot of things there that are showing to be making a difference. So we're going to continue those things and making sure that we stay true to those things and consistent with them and relentless with them as well. And that's it. So this is, you know, it's a journey we've gone on over the past number of years from, you know, our, in 2019 with our instructional audit and creating structures and alignments and really focusing in on the professional development around effective instructional practices and always with that end goal of our Portrait of a Titan and our students receiving those competencies, earning those competencies that'll help them throughout life. And we're, you know, and one thing, and one of the things that I talked to Tracy and Mike a lot about is we're going to just maintain that focus and relentlessness. That work that we're doing is having a real impact. And we're going to continue to, to push in that area and make sure that all of our kids can achieve at high levels and are ready for, for life. That's all. I got any other questions?
I, after, after every school report card presentation, I kind of say the same thing and.
It could have been shorter.
No. That's actually, that's, that's fantastic response. Thank you. It's about, it's always, it's about improving. It's about, you know, we, we may not be five stars across the board, but we are continually improving. And I'm very proud to have, to be on the board and representing the school district when we have numbers like this. And it's not that there's not improvements to be made. There always are and there always will be. But I think we have some, we have great people in the positions that we have and it is driving this district upward. And I'm just, I'm really excited and proud to be part of, of the district when we can talk about things like this. And I know that the areas that require a little bit more attention, understanding that you really can drill down on these results and figure out what's happening and why it's happening and how we can stop it from happening, something that you guys will do to, to make next year's numbers even better. Thank you, and thank you to Ash everybody.
Everybody, it is everybody, yeah.
I appreciate you taking the time to explain it in a way that it's easier to understand because it's a lot of difficult data, but this makes it a lot easier for people who don't live in your world.
Yeah. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Hey, superintendent's update given today by our assistant superintendent.
I, I would like to just say about, I have a couple of thoughts about the report card. The first one is, I think my overwhelming thought was, teachers matter. And the work that they do every day, our teachers showed up and are doing that work. So you, you know what you've tried to put in place and you, and you know what you think everyone's doing, but that helps to validate how hard our staff works every day. And like, you get emotional thinking about how hard, I know that they've been pushed and how hard that they, they look at. They take everything so seriously and I'm just very proud of our staff for the work that they put in. I, I also, Nick is, Nick knows that early literacy is so important for our future success. So when he's saying, this is my favorite one, is, it's because he knows that the years to come, once you have that building block, you go. And so that to me is amazing. And I, I wasn't at the elementaries yet, but, and that's a district measure. So that's all three elementary schools that are helping to get us to that measure. So I'm very excited about that too, Nick, and what, what we've done with that. Very proud of our team that, Lori, I think you've hit it on the head, is we just saw a couple of gaps. Good, good results, but we just saw, like, that's me, I'm a, I see the things that we need to work on, as does our staff, like, they're happy about that stuff. They go, oh, look at, look at chronic absenteeism, you know, we have to do something about that. And I'm very proud that we, we always take steps to then address what our, our perceived deficiency. So I know Tracy, I wish she could have been here to tell the staff thank you too for how hard they worked and our kids for taking everything so seriously and putting the work in to get better. I say this all the time, there are districts around us who can roll out of bed and achieve. What they don't do is keep up with us with growth, which means we're taking kids here and we're moving them here, and that doesn't just happen. That's a plan and that's teaching. And so very proud of our school district. We, the, the superintendent's update, she just, Tracy wanted me to update you guys on, we had a wonderful PD day on Thursday. And I need to thank academic affairs, pupil services, and Dr. Stropko and personnel for helping us organize it. This was a PD that was actually developed by our BRIA Federation of Teachers and our OPSY locals with, with the administration, based on a survey that we had put out on climate. And one of the overwhelming things that came back is that student behaviors in our schools, in our classrooms are impacting our climate. And so we, we developed a day together to help put tools in, not just teachers' tool bags, but all of our staff's tool bags on how to work with students who might be difficult to work with, who don't have all the advantages that some of the other kids might have, students who have behaviors. And so we did a whole morning, 32 of our professional staff gave presentations in the morning. And it was fantastic. I was, I wish I could have, I could only see one of, I got to go around to all of them, but I only got to see a few minutes of each. They were really, really good and I wish I could have seen them all. And I want to thank our staff who put time in to prepare those presentations. And then in the afternoon, our buildings did great work with PBIS and relationship mapping and taking some time to make sure every kid has somebody in our buildings. Some really good work that was done there in the afternoon. Thank you to Meredith Ondak and Lori Sanson for helping to organize that work. But it does fall back on our building principals and our administrators and our teachers then to follow through on it. And so I'm very appreciative of that. It was a, it was, it was a, I thought, a really good day and our feedback from the staff has been. That's it. Talked, I know, there's a game there.
Well, the score's still 0-0, so we're good. Okay, the consent agenda, it's recommended that items E3 to E13 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved.
Second.
Just, it's just all typical, ordinary stuff that's on the agenda, starting to do it.
That's okay.
And my microphone's not on either.
I see we have some long-term employees that are retiring.
Yeah, numerous teachers and our members of our classified staff as well.
Hey, roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Mrs. Urki?
Yes.
Number 14, it's recommended that items E15 to E16 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead, Jill, roll call.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Mrs. Urki?
Number 17, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the quote from Morton's Landscape Development Company for bioretention renovations at Brea Mid Park Middle School as shown in the exhibit.
Second.
It, it was, every year, the Cuyahoga Soil and Conservation Water District comes out and does an evaluation of our property and we had some work to do to get back to 2019 standards.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Urki?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Number 18, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the quote from JW Trailer Sales for the purchase of a new landscaping trailer as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
Our old trailer has seen better days. Time for a new one.
Hey, roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Urki?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
And number 19 is Board Policy Review on three different policies, 8120, 8510, and 5111.0.
8120 is actually, was caught by Dr. Stropko's department with that, it must, I'm going to blame Vincenzo Roggerio, but it was probably my fault. We missed the last four check, check marks. And so there are four things that need to be added into this policy for, to, to be in compliance. And I, the original policy that we had did not have VWX or Y in it. And then the, 8510 is our wellness policy. We, we got our wellness committee up and going and I want to say, the Well Fest was awesome that the district had, but a lot of, the committee member, Meredith Ondak and a lot of the committee members were there to help put that on. But in our first meeting, we decided, we've really been talking a lot about staff wellness and student wellness. And so we're going to create a subcommittee, one for staff, one for students. But our, our Board Policy, which is in operations, did not talk about staff at all. So we put a couple of lines in there to talk about, that we really want to hold ourselves accountable to, up for staff wellness as well. So we just added a couple of lines to that policy. And then 511104 is part-time enrollment. We didn't have that policy and that would allow for people who are, let's say, homeschooled to be able to take some courses at, at the high school.
Didn't we have a first reading on this?
Is this the second of it?
It is noted as a second reading.
Okay.
Okay. Because they're all together, so we can vote on that one, not the other two?
Yeah. I don't remember that one, but if it was, do you remember if that was on?
It was.
It says second reading, so I'm assuming, yes, you can.
Yeah.
I motion that we accept the new policy, 511104.
Second.
A discussion about it. A roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
A treasurer's update.
The treasurer's report's linked into the agenda tonight. It's been a very busy last couple of weeks in the treasurer's office. We are currently undergoing three audits right now. Our regular audit, they've started that. Our Medicaid audit, they're doing that. We, we do get audited on Medicaid each year. And our health insurance consortium audit. So it's been very busy keeping up with the auditors and getting all the stuff to the companies to do our financial statements. The numbers are running right where they should be this time of year. The forecast presentation will be next month. There, it will be a little bit more in-depth because there's some changes coming. Also too, the auditor estate is going to start really auditing forecasts. They have audited them in the past, but a couple of districts have gotten themselves into some trouble. You can read about Mount Healthy, that's a very good article to read. And the auditors are going to really start scrutinizing the forecasts for changes. Why? Why did this change from the May forecast to the November forecast? So more thorough assumptions on the treasurer's and more wording will be put into the, the assumption documents to explain variances. And we'll go from there. Again, I'm not really worried about the audit because I can easily explain why things change, so, but it'll be a little bit more thorough presentation next month. We have some things coming with our CEP program, where all kids eat free. It also affects our state, state funding, where we will see some more dollars, so we will go through that. And then more to come next month.
Thank you. Number two, it's recommended that items F3 to F8 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved.
Everything's routine on the consent agenda. I just, I want to say thank you again. We, we always get gifts and donations. They help out in areas of need. It's just great to see all the donations on there this month, again.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Next is discussion on policy 9211. This was brought to my attention by the PTA Council, specifically letter A, which is just some rules and procedures. And this one says, "School employees and board-approved school volunteers may not be directly compensated any manner by district support organizations." That's fine. It's the second part. Additionally, "School employees and board members will not manage or have access to district support organization funds or serve as a voting member or officer of the organization." And what was shared with me is that we have many staff members, as you know, who live in our district and they have kids and they are actively involved in our PTAs and boosters. And volunteers are limited these days in all those organizations, especially since COVID. And they're afraid that this, either part of it, either the funds or the voting part, will limit functions of some of the volunteers that they do have that work very hard. So I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
I, I completely can understand where the limitations could create problems. I think a lot of us are involved with nonprofits and we know that volunteers are, in, that many cases are few and far between. And to put limitations on those that are willing to serve in these roles is counterproductive for the organization. Certainly, serving as a board member or a voting member or officer certainly be, I have no, that's no problem whatsoever. The, the funding issue is a little bit more touchy, but I do believe further in the, further in the entire policy. It does mention something about being able to be audited by the district. It would be, the finances would have to be presented to the district if the district so requested it. And so if a problem would arise, then, you know, it could be looked into and addressed. So that kind of alleviates that concern there a little bit. So I, I could support altering that language so that, make the best use of the people who want to do good for our organization.
Well, I can appreciate the desire to write the policy in a way that is convenient for our boosters and our PTAs, but I think that we probably need some more information, maybe from Neola, about why this was recommended language. Because one of my concerns is that, and one of the great things about our district is that our boosters and our PTAs are so much a part of the culture of our schools. But I think that there is a danger that the roles can be, the lines can be blurred. So if you have an employee of the district who is also serving as an officer of the, of the PTA, you know, it, I think that it blurs, you know, where does this person's role as a staff member begin and end when they're serving inside of an organization? There is, there's real risk of conflict of interest. And, and when we're talking about conflicts, I think that we have to be cautious about the kind of language we have in our policies. It protects not only the individuals, but the organizations in the district as well. So I think that we probably need more information before we write our dream policy.
I'd like to clarify, I think in letter A, when it says, "School employees and board members," I think that means us as board members. So not school employees serving as board members in the organization. It's specifically talking about handling funds and serving as a voting member, which technically, any employee that joins the PTAs, which I know the vast majority of them do, they are already voting members of that organization. So it, it's kind of contrary, we're asking staff to join our organizations, but then according to this, they, they can't vote.
Well, and that made me wonder too, you know, because the PTAs have two different membership levels. And, you know, we should ask the question though, is there a reason why Neola would recommend this language and why we shouldn't maybe have staff members that are voting members? Should this different membership level be a non-voting membership level? And what's the reason behind that?
And I also think we have to look at bylaws for the organizations as well, because I think there might be limitations in place as well within their bylaws. I'm not certain, but I know that at least one of the organizations I'm involved in, there are rules in place as far as employees of the parent or company and board members that serve. So I mean, I would think that PTA bylaws would possibly need to be looked at as well.
The last time that I saw them, when I was involved, it, it did not specify anything. But that was a while ago. And the Neola guidance, I shared it with everybody. That's all that the district received.
But I mean, they have lawyers that are employed at Neola, right? I mean, somebody wrote this.
Actually, John Britton is a part of the Neola writing of the, of the policy. We can get exactly from, from Neola. I'd start with Jeff Patterson, who's our rep. And we actually have some new policy coming out, but I can get them to, I can have them specifically tell us why that was put in there and what it refers back to. I can get that guidance for you guys.
One of my other concerns too is whether or not we have an insurance policy that comes into play, because there, there is certainly an employment practices insurance policy and that, that covers employees in the course of their duties and responsibilities for the district. But then when they are serving as volunteers inside of our boosters and, and PTAs, you know, is it an insurance policy that prohibits that, you know, additional-
The PTAs do have, like, an E and O policy for their, their board, but-
They are tendered under our policy also for a small fee every year. But that is a great question. The, the line of the employee in the PTA is insurance. Yeah, I can find that out.
Awesome. Thanks. It's, what about with coaches that are also employees? There's, I mean, I think stricter rules for that aren't, in terms of handling money, fundraising and stuff?
Uh, yes. And there, we don't allow any co-mingling of any funds with the PTAs or the boosters. They have their own boxes. They come and pick up all their own funds. I, I would just be worried about, what if something happened? If that line gets blurred? Where does the, with them being employees, where does that fall? So that, that is an excellent question I can ask the-
I've often looked at the, that, the money part as actually a protection for employees because they'll be like, oh, while you work at the high school, can you just take? And it's, you want to keep those lines separate between booster organization and employee as much as possible. But, you know, I, I think it's, the first starting point should be talk to legal about, why was this put in there? So we had an understanding.
Can you do that, Mike?
Yeah, absolutely.
Get us that information.
Yes.
All right. So then hopefully we'll bring it back next meeting for further discussion. Okay. Minutes approval. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes of the September 9th Records Commission meeting and the September 9th regular meeting as shown in the exhibit. Any corrections or additions? A roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
There's no legislative update. Are there any committee reports?
Safety and security will be the 25th.
Thank you to everyone that came to the Titan tailgate and supported the Education Foundation. It's fun.
Board of Education comments. I'd like to make a motion to add a special meeting on October 23rd at 5:30 for the purpose of an executive session to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or of regulations or state statutes.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Are there any other comments?
I just, I received a newsletter from OSBA that went out to student achievement liaisons and just wanted to share some interesting news about school districts in Colorado that have gone to a four-day school week. And it seems like there are sort of mixed reviews. So it, a majority of the school districts in Colorado have gone to a four-day school week, but these are mostly in rural communities. They did it in order to try to attract and retain teachers to the district by giving them a four-day work week. And, and they're very clear in these articles that they didn't decrease the amount of time the kids are in schools. They're in school longer, but they're only in school for four days. But so far, it has not really helped with teacher retention. It looks like math and reading scores are lower, but some people say it's not affecting student achievement, but the headlines seem to indicate that students in these four-day school week districts are not doing as well. Just interested.
Hey, can we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
No, let's just keep doing this.
Okay. Roll call, please.
All in favor?
Aye. Score? Thank you. Go Guards.